...has been such an important thing. Even myself, like, I do this work, but I also have had the experience of it. Like, I was a young mom. So I was a teen and I became a mom. And so I experienced housing discrimination and landlords trying to ask me for, you know, six months of rent in advance because they couldn't trust that I could afford it. And it's like, who was in a position as like a young single mom to give six months of rent? And to be denied apartments and not even, not even like having the knowledge to know that what I was experiencing was discrimination. So I think working here also has been eye-opening for myself to realize that people don't know all the time that they're being discriminated against and how to claim your rights because you get discriminated against. And then usually your, your main focus is to, you know, you're looking for housing, so you want to move on and find the next and find a place to live. And so a lot of people don't know that, you know, they don't have to, they don't have to act right away. Like, they can wait until they're in a better spot in their lives or in a better headspace and then, you know, document everything and make sure they can go back later to like the Human Rights Tribunal and file even like a year later. So a lot of people don't know that and they also just don't, don't have the framework to know what they're experiencing is actually against the law. So I think our, a big part of our job is education and just letting people know what their rights are so that they feel empowered to enforce them and let them know what their legal avenues are. So I think, yeah, that's a big part of our work.
Well, thank you very much. Well, here we are tonight, so we are interested, of course, through experiences, the issues that I can take, put out of action, fight on behalf of the community and make it into issues and to fight. So here we are also, we're here to answer the questions. If you have questions, you can line up there and hopefully we'll be back to answer them or even share your story so that it helps me, you know, formulate a better way of understanding your concerns on housing issues so that I then take that to fight on behalf of our community on that issue. So you can line up here. Is this microphone up here? Does anyone have questions for us?
Hi, I'm Amy Suren and a single mom of two kids. I would like to ask you, um, oh, sorry. Is there a criteria that developers have to follow before they put up a building?
You can state it with, um, excuse me, I'll say it exactly.
Is there a criteria that these developers follow that before putting up all these buildings? That you should, that, that involves English before this?
Okay, well, we do have a little protocol when they do put in requests, we call it a proposition. So under the, was it my thing too, but we wanted to comment, we asked if we could have more density because developers basically have the right to do what they want, they're leased in a house.
Johnny would be? Yeah, I'll, I'll answer that, I'll take that on. Developers do have criterias. If you're, every piece of land in the city of Toronto is zoned one way or another. For example, zoning can control how high the building is, how far from the street it should be, things like that. One thing that during the previous government Acorn pushed for is to include in the zoning bylaw a regulation that says a certain percentage of units have to be affordable. This currently does not exist. There is no framework to do that. The previous government started that framework, made it very limited, and it, and the city of Toronto has yet not adopted that. So in general, in the zoning bylaws, there's nothing that forces the developer to build affordable. However, the city of Toronto often bargains with the developer. For example, they'll give them either a tax break in, in exchange for affordable units or what Ebony was saying, they'll give them, they'll allow them to build higher than the zoning in exchange for community benefits. Very seldom, so very few cases, these community benefits include cheaper rental. Most, most of the time, these community benefits include things like parks, uh, you know, in, in Weston, there is the case of the farmer's market, they're going to create a space for the farmer's market. But the units themselves, it's very hard to force a developer to rent for cheaper.
Well, that being said, we are asking City Hall to, when they consider the applications put in by the developers, we'd like to see them partner with nonprofit organizations and we will consider those applications in preference to developers who have not partnered with a nonprofit organization or like a co-op type situation. But I mean, at the end of the day, it is, I guess, whatever offers the best money, the city thinks that they can get out of it. It seems to all be profit-driven. And then, when it comes down to, we call those like town hall meetings with the density, we were discussing, we would like to see taller buildings so that we can get more affordable units, but many people are against the, the breaking of the zoning bylaws. You know, people who have smaller houses, the not-in-my-backyard mentality, right? So I mean, this is a, it's a war in between our own factions and I think people are considering the fact that we are hurting ourselves. So again, development doesn't need to mean displacement. We can include everybody, but we need to start taking ourselves apart.
Thank you.
And that's what you're doing?
That is definitely what we are trying to do.
I'll encourage everybody maybe to join it.
Thank you.
It's all number one, secondly, you're very impressive.
And those of you who don't know, joining up, joining up is an expert in policy, municipal municipal issues, yes, that's what he is. And definitely, if you are shy and you don't want to talk about your story and your experiences, you can always send me an email and definitely that will help me quickly take it as you're presenting. I see Yafet, hold it.
Yeah, well, I'm not shy, yes. Uh, yeah, so, um, one, I just want to put out there that, one of the things that you mentioned, Ebony, was about organizing and, uh, you know, the NDP federally has put out a platform, a commitment to, um, building 500,000 new affordable housing units across the country as, as part of the platform of what we're making of these. So that's the kind of thing that I think we can organize for and I'd like to throw to everybody as well.
Do you have a question? Excuse me, do you have a question?
Ebony, yeah. Ebony, you mentioned specifically about organizing.
Yes.
And Johnny, I know you probably talked about this, but I'd want to hear from everybody here on this. What are some, what are some tangible things that people in the room here can do as part of that, as part of that organizing? And, uh, because I know from myself, you know, Johnny was really helping, helping on the tenants and he was able to help us start a tenant association in our, in my building, which is just across the park here. Uh, so I'd be interested to know, how can people get involved in that because it sounded very daunting until we did it, so I'd be interested to know.
It does, it is a large task for one person to do, obviously, but, um, tenant associations are a great way to get things done and Johnny just did this to our building too. You and Medina pulled these two buildings together. And, um, I'm beginning to see the lack of apathy disappear, I mean, the apathy disappear. People feel like one person can't do anything, which is true. It's easy for your landlord to bully you, push you around, ignore you, but it's kind of harder to ignore like a third of your building. So, um, something you could do, whether you are an Acorn member or just by yourself, is talk to your neighbors. I mean, I don't think that anybody has that sense of community when you live in a high-rise building. How many people know the names of everybody on the floor? I'm trying to make it a point to know all my neighbors. I want to know who's got the children. God forbid there was a fire, I'm knocking on doors, I want to know who's got kids, I want to know who's home during the day, I need to know my neighbors. And annoying my neighbors, I can understand better the problems that they face. Like, um, I have bad cabinets. It wasn't until I got to know the gentleman who lives directly underneath me, he also has black mold in his cabinets, so now I know to look for that because these, these things spread, right? So now I know the people underneath me and above me, we all have the same crack in our walls. That being said, we can all put in work orders now and now it's a more pressing situation for the landlord. So just organizing amongst yourselves is one thing. If you find that you've got a bunch of people who are facing copro issues, right, you can also band together to call 311. If enough of you call 311, they will send out a city inspector, someone who's like a third party, it's not the landlord coming to look at it now, it's like the big guys. But that's more than just me calling, I mean, I'll need like at least 20 phone calls. So you can organize amongst yourselves like that. You can come up to Acorn and you can help organize by knocking on doors, posting flyers, I mean, we've got spaces available at the headquarters to make phone calls, place phone calls, printing flyers, there's so much work to be done. So whether it's just something simple in your building or that you feel like you've got a little bit of extra time and you want to help the bigger cause, I mean, there's a bunch of things you can do. Write letters to your NDP, write letters to your city council or send emails to John Torrey. If you have a free day, you can go down to City Hall. I mean, there's much.
Another question.
Yeah, yeah. A couple of questions. First, I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, it's an honor.
Honor is mine. Secondly, I want to ask you first question. If I do not live in the city of York, and it still is in my heart because I lived it a very long time, all my kids are born here, but right now I live a little bit out of the body, how can I support you to work a harder of what you're trying to reach? That's my first question. If you want to answer first of all, I can build this thing.
Um, I'm not quite sure, I mean, if you're maybe a member, I need to live in my organization, so I think you could write a member to, or write to your NDP no matter where you live.
That was inside, and the second question, do I need to be a member to help you?
No, you don't. So with Acorn, Acorn often organizes events. For example, on April 5, which is Friday, we're going to walk from Ebony's building to
Oh, I'm sorry, say that again?
April 5 at 6:00 PM, 6:15 PM in front of 2450 Weston Road, that's the intersection of Weston and Oak. We're going to start a march there and we're going to walk down. When people in the community or people who feel like they're part of the community even though they don't live here, come and join those marches, it gives us numbers, it gives us also, more importantly, psychological support. We, we want to think that people support our boss, we don't want to think that we're alone in this. This is big support. If you have the time and the know-how, even if it's not your building, you can go to other people's buildings to help them organize a tenant association. For example, Ebony mentioned, oh, you know, you want to know your neighbor, you want to get together. Concretely speaking, the way that happens is you print out flyers or maybe you handwrite them if it's a small enough building and you post and, and you distribute those flyers to your neighbors saying, "We're meeting Thursday evening, 7:30 PM in the lobby of the building and we're going to form a..." It's as easy as that. You meet and then you start talking, right? And so if, if you're someone who doesn't live in that building, you can support maybe by providing free towels and the pamphlets, things like that.
Okay. If I have a disability issue and I cannot walk, do the walk to walk, is that the last one, last point to your program that I can do for help? Post there is whatever needs for doing that.
Well, I mean, as far as physical march goes, if you've got a disability and you don't have a scooter, then you could always meet us at the end of the marching, wave a flag or you could always make yourself available to give some sort of like a speech. I mean, sometimes we have press that comes out, sometimes they want to hear people's stories. You could always offer your services that way. Um, what else? I mean, we always take it to do.
Where, where in the March, that is, exactly.
Sorry?
It ends at 2240 Weston Road.
That's by Church Street and it'll be out front of Astoria Place.
Oh, yeah, I know.
It's also owned by Ki Residential. So in that aspect, we're trying to get everyone, not even my building, but everyone who's got the same landlord together. So I'm getting to know not just my neighbors, but like my, my sister neighbors down the street.
Thank you. I got a question for Mr. Davis.
Siri.
Siri, Siri. Anyways, first, I thank you as I did, uh, previous speaker for your service and you and Kim, and she. My question to you both of you today is, I'm a community activist in the neighborhood where I live right now and I used to be here too. I have acquired a few tenants with a disability who lives different, properly managed by different companies, including ECU, Dell, and they do not have accessibility. Okay? Disability, accessibility. And they have a really difficulty. Someone has to come out to let them in, either grab their arms or their wheelchair to let them in. What can you do for those people, the vital people?
Sure, um, so I can answer. Um, so, yeah, that's a, a big bulk of our work is assisting, assisting clients who call us who have disabilities, who need accommodations in housing or to make their building or their unit more accessible to meet their needs. So like the Human Rights Court, it really looks at integration and full participation. So we take that as, you know, people with disabilities, they want to live independently, they don't want to be relying on neighbors and things like that. So we would look at what do they need in their building or their unit and it's coming from them, they tell us, we don't make it up, you know, they know, they're experts of their own lived experience and they know what they need. And so we just help them with the advocacy part of it. You tell us what you would need to live independently and have, you know, have your building or unit be accessible and we'll either give you tools and strategies to self-advocate, like what you should be saying to your landlord and like how to cite certain parts of the law, or, or we can reach out for you, we can write a letter to your housing provider, we can follow up with them directly, have a conversation. This is what the tenant needs to live, to live independently, either in their unit and your building. And you have a legal duty to accommodate them.
Is there, is there any viable, uh, for accessibility?
Yeah, so there's a few. So under, you know, there's the AODA.
Sorry?
There's the AODA.
Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act.
Yeah, so that's set by the, by the province. So that, that applies to housing providers, so they have a legal, like, they have to meet certain accessibility, accessibility threshold, but also under the Human Rights Code, it's called the duty to accommodate. So it's a particular part of the Human Rights Code that, that makes sure that, you know, going beyond just general accessibility requirements, it's looking that each individual has their own needs. And so it really looks at an individual approach, like what does this person need to live independently? So if you're talking about generally, it would be like the AODA, but if you're talking about individual needs, you'd be looking at the duty to accommodate under the code.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We have, this time has been very patient.
Yeah, I try to be patient. I've been waiting years actually to ask this question. Um, I'll ask the question before I explain why. I live in a Canadian Mental Health Association house, it's owned by the Canadian Mental Health Association. I suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder. I want to know, in this case it would be, if the Canadian Mental Health Association is breaking mental health laws, who do I go to? Because the police can't get involved with that, that's Canadian Mental Health Association. If they are also breaking rentals rules and laws, who do I go to? And if this is going on every day, 24 hours a day, over and over again, every day? Now, this went on for a year before the household threatened to kill the person who was causing this problem, before the person stopped. But at no time whatsoever did the Canadian Mental Health Association, which is my landlord, actually get involved to stop this. Now, this person was basically standing outside my bedroom door, never stopped, 24 hours a day, seven days a week for a year. I lost three jobs because of, four jobs because of. He was standing outside of my bedroom door, kicking, punching, screaming, some of the most painless words you can imagine. "I'm going to kill you, I'm going to do this, I'm going to..." Every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I called the police, the police show up, the landlord comes out and says, "Oh, that's okay, where do the Canadian Mental Health Association, we're taking care of it." The police leave and I'm going to do it again and I got to lose another job. And I, and I was actually on my way to being able to get off of disability and support myself from a job because I can't get a place to rent because I don't have credit. Otherwise, I have two supports, which gives me $1,000 credit, plus I was working, which gave me, I had no problem with renting a place, finding a place to rent, but what landlord has to rent to me if I have zero credit? So I'm trying to understand, how do I get protection from my own landlord when my landlord's the, the law, the, you know, law courts man? They're the, they're the mental health law. It's kind of like, if the police assault you, who do you call?
Are you going to call your boss?
And also, just to make sure this is understood, I've already written to the courts, I've already written to everybody that I possibly could write to, I've already went to look, to legal aid, I've already went to the, I've written to everybody. Everybody, I'm waiting for the courts to get back. I mean, the courts apparently told me it would take 16 weeks from the time that I handed the application to the time of the court date. It's been six weeks, I'm still waiting for them to get back to me to tell me that I'm going to have a court date. So this kind of gives me the understanding, I'm going to have to start that process all over again. But how does legal aid have the right to refuse me? How does my landlord have the right to break all these laws against me, terrorize me for a year long?
Thank you, we get the, I think we get the...
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know what to answer.
So, yeah, it can be really challenging. I, like, that's, yeah, a really challenging situation. And landlords do have to deal with harassment between tenants, they do have to intervene in those cases. It is probably a little bit different if it's a, if it's a CMH A house, I don't know exactly what law they fall under, so that would be, I'd have to do some research there. But typically, yeah, just harassment, your landlord should be intervening in that harassment, right?
My landlord was also the caretaker for this person. This person wasn't meant, well, this person was mentally ill.
Yeah, yeah.
Your landlord was the caretaker. That's why I presume it's their fault because he's breaking the law, whoever, his caretaker is responsible for a lot of this. But I don't know who to ask, I don't know who to go to. I'm still in this situation, trying to get back to the monies that I lost last year and I don't know what to do.
I'll give you my card, so just, you just, my, you can touch my...
Okay, guys, you're down on the corner of your office. So I actually want to walk through everybody, but I think, let me come to this meeting first and I will submit to your office.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, is this like an unanswered question? Because I assume this is a hard question.
It's a very specific situation that's got a lot of complex overlays, right? So I'm not sure it's something that we can fully address at this moment as we have other people that we'd like to get to, but like, as I said, we could talk to you afterwards.
Yes, I just want to...
It is a very unique case, right? There's a lot of complex factors here. I'm really sorry that this is happening to you and thank you for bringing it to my attention. I mean, like, I've had some horrors myself, but nothing quite so horrible is that, I mean, being uncomfortable in your own home.
This is something that I'm only getting a small part of what really happened, what's going on in my life. But I'm, I was actually just hoping you guys would hear my question and maybe I could come and discuss it with you another day, you guys could think about it. I just need to know, who am I supposed to be even asking these questions to?
Well, you started them down the right path. We will discuss it with you afterwards, but thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What was your name again? I will miss the first part. His name?
Your name is, uh?
Your name? Oh, sorry, Francesco Palomo.
Francesco, okay. Thank you so much, Francesco.
No, sorry.
I'll say just one thing and Ebony and Johnny can talk about this more as well, but when we organize tenants' associations in buildings, it really does result in putting money into people's pockets. And we have two success stories on Weston Road from just a couple of months ago as well, when a group of tenants formed a tenant's association, stood up to their landlord against an unfair rent increase, an above guideline increase, and they were able to get that increase reduced in addition to claiming their automatic rent reduction. So that's about $80 to $100 back in people's pockets because they stood up, they demanded for rights. And that happens when we get together. So I want to, I want to make sure everybody knows that there are good news stories in this, in this issue as well. And it starts by talking to your neighbors, it starts by, you know, joining together and joining forces because we can have those kinds of victories. So I wanted to just make sure that that message gets out across to everyone here. And if you need help forming a tenant's association, speak to myself, Ebony, Johnny, we can all help you with resources, with flyers, with people power to make sure that you're feeling strong and empowered to do those things. My question is, well, for all of the panelists, I'm especially interested in hearing from Sarah just because I know your work in preventing evictions. What we've seen with our current premier, I'll step back so I don't blow on the mic, with our, our premier has rolled back tenant rights in a lot of ways. And not only has Doug Ford completely eliminated rent control on new developments, and this is especially important in Weston, in your South Weston, because we have the Mount NSLRT, we have lots of new development coming in, we have a new 30-story building that was built in rental, but because of the new law that our premier has passed, none of those units are going to be rent-controlled. It means every year, the landlord can increase the rents, whichever amount he or she wants or feels is necessary to keep their units competitive in the market, to make sure that they can maximize their profits. And there is no law now that prevents them from doing that. So in addition to completely eliminating rent control on new units, our premier has also, and is also planning on speeding up the eviction process. And so we know and I know, working with so many tenants and working with different tenant associations, that when you get your first notice of eviction, maybe you're just a couple dollars short, you know? Maybe something happened and you're just a couple dollars short and all you need is a few extra days to be able to make that final payment and, and pay your full rent. So our premier right now is increase, is allowing landlords to increase rents exponentially and is then making it easier for landlords to evict people for various kinds of reasons and speeding up that, that eviction process. So my question, as an organization that is working to prevent evictions, working to ensure the right to housing for people in the city and across the province, what kind of threat do you see that posing for the work that you're doing, but also for the folks who are struggling to get by and pay rent as of yet? And to turn to our, our NDP, of course, as a member of the official opposition, what kind of work is the NDP doing to, to try and hold those kinds of changes at bay? So I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Kira. Well, we are very concerned about speeding up, speeding up the eviction process. I think, you know, it works in the favor of landlords and not in the favor of tenants. I, a lot of people don't know what the eviction process is like, a lot of people, like, just don't have that education and knowledge and so that works against them. And so that's what we do is that we really hope to spread that knowledge to people about the eviction process. A lot of people will get their first notice and they'll leave on the date on that notice, right? Without even realizing that they have the chance to go to the landlord and tenant board and argue this case. So I think to fight that, I think education is going to really impact that, but obviously we would love it if the process isn't sped up.
Yeah, I think also the, the problem too is I think, like, at least from what we've read, it's like a lot of deregulation and, you know, not necessarily having a landlord and tenant board, but maybe having people who aren't, you know, educators and things like that being able to, to speed up this process. And I, I think that it's really dangerous and especially like, especially for tenants having a disadvantage of not being able to get like legal representation and legal services. I find that very scary because, you know, especially when you aren't able to access a legal clinic, you need a lot of time to like let them know that you have this eviction case and, you know, to actually get them to be able to represent. And a lot of people just aren't getting that representation, so I think speeding is up is going to give people less of a chance to get either, you know, legal information from us or legal services, legal representation, and I think, think that is also scary as well.
And could I just follow up that question with, since you say education is so important, could you quickly help educate us about the difference between an eviction notice and an eviction order and how people should react to, to either of those things and just so that, you know, we can walk away with a little bit more knowledge in our pocket?
Yeah, so of course...
Thank you, I think there's also that need to line up, let's keep it to one question to the, to the...
Yeah, so the first thing you give is a notice. The notice is, will tell you what you're being convicted for. So it could be rental evasion, it could be a lot of different things.
Thank you, I think there's also land needs right now, let's keep you to one question.
Yeah, so the first thing you give is a notice. The notice is, will tell you what you're being evicted for. So it could be rental raises, it could be a lot of different things. If the issue is not solved, then they apply to the landlord and tenant board, and you get a notice of hearing, that would be an L form. And so that would be your hearing date at the landlord and tenant board. Then, when you go to the landlord and tenant board, that, right now, we're looking at a couple months wait, then the adjudicator decides whether or not you're being evicted. And obviously, it's a little bit different for every case. If the adjudicator decides that you're being evicted, you get an order that means you have eleven days. Then they call the sheriff's office. And when the sheriff or the court comes, that's the day you actually have to leave. So a lot of people will leave earlier. But it's important for people to know that they don't have to leave until it's actually time to leave. It gives you time to find other housing if you aren't being evicted.
Sorry, I have a question for you. Do we still have that order of stay? I mean, I have one of those happenings with extended that eleven days to twenty-one days? Or is that also just thrown out?
I believe we still have it, but I'm not a hundred percent. In very special circumstances, you may be able to get an order of stay, which even though they've already applied to the sheriff, you can now get another hearing, and you get twenty-one days now. But generally, once you get the notice on your door that is stamped with that little red circle that says the sheriff has received the information and is coming out, it could be any time. And usually between one and two weeks, if you're lucky. And once he's locked your door, seventy-two hours to get your belongings. You have to make an arrangement with the landlord, but that is that. They will change the locks and you are now homeless.
Thank you. And Kira asked also, what am I doing as your representative? And I have been a member of the official opposition. We are standing up to folk conservatives and fighting these laws are not fair to tenants. And they are wrong, and definitely we need a rent control and more affordable housing. And we are going to fight that on behalf of this community and many tenants around this province as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for organizing this. My problem not gonna be very popular with my approach tonight. But I want a solution, and the solutions are gonna require money. This past year, I've had a couple of opportunities to become a landlord. And when I looked at the cost to rent the property, and the rental would be, it would not have been affordable, I would have been at great risk, and I was totally discouraged from becoming a landlord. It was so much property. I have not heard in this discussion, and this bothers me, I have not seen good numbers on what a rental property, multi-story story, costs per square foot, either to purchase or to operate. I haven't heard what's a reasonable rent or return on investment. I haven't heard what's a reasonable cost for maintenance. And I haven't heard a reasonable cost for damages by tenants. And without those numbers, we don't know if the landlords are lying through their teeth and they're making a fortune, which somehow I don't think is true, because I've heard of buildings being abandoned, apartment buildings where the owner just walked away from it because they didn't want to deal with it anymore, or they asked for demolition order. I've also heard people say they've got rats and roaches, and the landlord is still cashing the rent checks. So do we have good numbers so we can go there and say, this building should be at this rental? It would give you a fair return. If you had a clue how to manage it, you would be making a profit here. But you're incompetent, and you're not doing your job, and that's why you're losing money. Instead of which, we're rewarding the incompetent people. And the people who are competent, they're not gonna come back and say, yeah, we could charge a lot less, but we're confident people like it, so we're just gonna charge them twenty percent more than we need. So why don't we have those numbers to go out and say, this is a bad building? You should take it over, do it properly, and let's get it flipped? Why aren't we moving in that direction where we'll increase supply? Instead of which, we're just sitting there spinning our wheels and it's been going on like this as long as I can remember, which is the rental market about fifty years now. There's good landlords and bad. And if you're a tenant, you just hope you get a good landlord and you can afford to pay the rent. But we haven't solved the problem of putting supply out there so there's rental apartments that are available. So can we get those numbers? And can we go out there and attack the bad landlord, landlords, and get them brought up to a better place in the business?
Yes, Mike, I have some numbers for you. Q Residential, the landlord that owns the building where Ebony lives, and Isham, and maybe a few others, they are owned by a sort of a private investment from a man named John Lego, but they are also co-owned by Manulife Financial. They paid thirty-six million dollars for the property at twenty-four fifty, twenty-four sixty, when they bought it a few years ago. Today, they collect six and a half million dollars a year. You do the math. In only six years, they can pay, they can collect the value of the property. Notwithstanding, they have operational costs and everything, but this is an amazing investment opportunity. There is a, it's, when it comes to, so there's two different questions. When it comes to small landlords, there's always questions. When it comes to these investors that buy properties just to melt them to death, there is no question, the money is there. If they wanted to reduce their profit in order to make their building cleaner and better and more accessible, they have plenty of money. They pay very little for the property upfront, and they collect a lot in rent. And the reason for that is because there's no rent control on vacancies. So even though there is rent control, and this is the main difference between small landlords and large landlords, small landlords are often reluctant to rent, someone who's not even a landlord is reluctant to rent out a unit, thinking that, you know, what if the operation of this rental ends up costing as much as the rent? I'm locked now, I can't raise the rent more than a certain percentage. This is not really an issue for large landlords, because they see turnover and they see their units, you know, the rental go up exponentially. And, you know, in this one case, it's an extreme case, but many, I would bet that many buildings are in that category, especially when you look at the ownership and you trace it back to hedge funds and to real estate investment trusts. They know what they're doing, they know that there's an amazing return. And that's why you see real estate investment trusts buying eight, twelve buildings in one day, and then next year, buying twenty more buildings, and then two months later, twenty-five more buildings. It's because there's money in it.
Yeah, just to, that was an amazing answer, just to add to that. Acorn has been fighting for the past fourteen years for what we'd like to call landlord licensing. Because like you said, there are good landlords and there are bad landlords. And the idea behind that would be kind of like a Chinese restaurant, or what, you walk in and you look in the window, and there's a letter on a big placard that says A+, or like, right? I want to know, the second I walk in, before I even talk about renting this place, I want to see, are there bedbugs? When did you last have any bedbugs? Did you act accordingly and treat the building? How was it treated? How long has it been since the last infestation? That, et cetera, et cetera. And so when you get bad landlords, and that information is made public knowledge, eventually, the bad landlords wouldn't be able to operate anymore, right? So that would leave better developments and opportunities for the good landlords. That being said, we got the Rent Safe TO program, which is better than what it was, but it's still not what we'd like to see. We want to see bad landlords be hit with bigger fines, especially the people who have those deep pockets that can afford to pay these smacks. I mean, like, a hundred, two hundred is nothing for them. I mean, they go for the big money, they need to be punished. And so if they get more than a smack on the nose, they might feel like they need to change. But like, the instance of my building, I believe they got it, was built in the seventies. And I think most buildings, if they're not properly maintained, have like a shelf life of something between forty to fifty years before everything, it just needs to be gutted. And of course, to them, that's worth money. Demolish it, build a brand-new shiny condo and make more money. They don't care that they displaced the rest of us. Versus a small landlord who actually lives in the same building. You're sharing this roof, it's everybody's personal interest to make sure that repairs are made. And I'm saying that, someone who either lives or intends to live or take that rental property back for their own usage, of course puts more effort into upkeeping it. And so there will be more output costs than input costs, because clearly, my landlord doesn't care about maintenance. They also would never come over and take a bath in my bathtub. I'm really sorry that it's been difficult for you, and especially with the Airbnb. But that was a great question. I'm sorry that it discouraged you.
Can we, from this meeting, expect to get some guidelines on cost of operating a building? To tell people so they know what they're paying for?
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that to light. Maybe you can come and talk to us at the end? And your name again, if I may?
Johnny knows where I live.
Oh, you, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, I'll be quick, I live up in, um, we, we, um, couple of questions very quickly. Is there a move to tax, tax on speculative property? Like condos or whatever, buildings that are, investors just need the thing vacant? Like another thing, there's stuff happening like that in Vancouver. And the other thing is, who decides what gets built on city land? I mean, there's lots of city land out there. If they could be dedicated to affordable housing somehow, I mean, it seems to make sense to me. On those sort of poor land stuff, that, that's, thank you. My name is Delano.
Well, the city of Toronto did recently reappropriate some land. Was it, we got twenty-one sites or twenty-six sites?
Yeah, the plan is called Housing TO, on eleven sites that the city owns. And they're, the public consultations are out now. And please connect with us so that you can make your comments on these, on these lands. So these are eleven sites that were declared surplus. The city doesn't need them anymore, and they want to build housing there. So far, it's an okay plan, it could be a lot better. Half of the units are, on some sites, half of the units are gonna be affordable. On other sites, it's less. There's a problem with it.
Yeah, so it comes down to what we discussed earlier about the inclusionary zoning. And from back in the Harris government, we basically got rid of all of our properties, our one land, and we sold it off. So this, these little bits of land that we have left are basically like parking lots. They are near transport hubs, and of course, can be great for condominiums. So we have developers who are topsy-topsy for these lands, and they're gonna bid, and they're gonna argue amongst themselves. And then it's up to the city to choose whichever presentation, presentation proposition? I'm sorry, I forgot these words lately. That would work the best for us. And so we ask for, say, we ask for thirty percent of these apartments to be affordable market, or we got a certain amount of condos, we want to make sure there's a certain amount of rental, and then like, maybe there's space left over for affordable. The developer will take a look at what we want and say, well, this is what we can afford to do, otherwise, it's not worth us to build on this land. Meanwhile, the city of Toronto does not have the money itself to put up these buildings. So we basically are in the developer's pockets. I mean, unless we ask for emergency funds from the government above us, but we don't want to do that. Apparently, they don't think it's a big enough problem. So until housing is considered an emergency or a human rights, we are going to have to ask the developers very nicely to please make some affordable housing for us. And the only way that's gonna work is if we let them build more units. So say for twenty-six floors, they're able to give us two. If we want four floors of affordable housing, we might have to let them build up to thirty-something. So these all come down to bids. And we do, the city of Toronto right now, they're asking preference be given to the bids that include co-ops or nonprofit developers, because the developer's just gonna build the building. And then the maintenance, the looking after the building, the running of the rentals, that is gonna go to, hopefully, a nonprofit organization or like a private industry. So that is where the rental costs come in, that's where the, yeah, like, sorry, the day-to-day functions and the management team comes to, yeah. So it's difficult to say right now what we're gonna get out of it. But these eleven sites are very important right now. And we're waiting to see what bids come in, and then we get to pick and choose the best and hope for the best. But what we're asking is that whatever's decided stays for ninety-nine years at that rate of affordability, and will not be broken. So you can come down to City Hall and hear more about that, tell John Torre your thoughts on it. But that's basically where we are right now. You have eleven sites left, and we're trying very hard to pick wisely. We'd like to see them be put up by nonprofits and co-ops, right? Yes.
Hi, my name is Norana, I live there. My question is, I'm a first-time small landlord, I have one unit. The question, the challenge I had was, I rented out, I'll tell the story in a question after. I rented, rented out for a tenant, he had a mental health issue. And for three months, they're constantly getting work, three months, I couldn't collect the rent. And meantime, my bank sent me a letter saying I need to pay my mortgage, otherwise they'd seize the property. So where could, I'm talking about a single landlord, a TGG landlord, where can they go for help? Like, can they come to your organization for help when they're in a situation like this? And also, if I'm going to rent it out like this, to, you know, put the pay, is there any policies on provincial level or city level or federal level that supports small landlords like me or myself, who encourage them to provide a, provide a supportive unit for the community? So that's my question.
I'm not aware of any city policy that encourages small landlords one way or another. At the Landlord and Tenant Board, if you go there, there is, you can get not legal advice, what is it called? Legal information from lawyers that are, just hang out there all the time. You can ask them questions as a landlord or as a tenant.
Awesome. So the Landlord Self-Help Center, they're a legal clinic for small landlords. So you could reach out to them and they could give you advice, like, yeah, like legal advice. Like at Sira, we're looking more to build partnerships with landlords and giving education as well. We just released an educational series for housing providers, small and large. So even if you go to our website, equalityrights.org, there is a page on our website for information for landlords. So we have free resources up there. So there's four webinars and a guide as well.
But, but there's no support, like, support system, like, for, like, for the timing that they're running through? Because for the first two years, when I had the property, I was negative to a hundred dollars. But with these things happening, so I was even negative more, so I had to get from, but my question is, is there any policies that you guys talked about in the provincial level to support, like, encourage? We're talking about affordability, so if we have lots of people who have basement units that they would like to rent, but there are certain sort of zoning that is not allowed?
Well, I would say, Doug Ford's whole idea about making this quicker to evict people, I think from like, whatever good spot he might have had in his heart, he was trying to help the small landlords by encouraging them. Because if you make it easier for you to evict people, maybe, like, because it's a horror story. I hear so many horror stories like this. And as a tenant, and I fight for people's rights, and I am on ODSP, I believe that it's a harmful stigma to have mental health, and everybody deserves to be housed. That being said, this is why I fight for co-ops, because there are people who are mentally unstable to the point where it's not safe for them to live alone. It could disrupt the enjoyment of anybody else living in their building. And we need specialized homes and buildings that can accommodate people with such needs, so that the onus is not on you, or small homeowners to have to take this into their house and then deal with these issues. So if we try and focus on more building of co-ops and these group homes, then there will be more affordable housing. But I think when Doug Ford said it was easier to kick people out, right? That's the only thing that you can do now, I think, is go through the system, explain reasonable unenjoyment. And there's a small loophole about you can stop renting if you are going to move your family in. That being said, can you come and talk to me when we're done this? Because I have a friend who maybe works with a friend, Victor, because I don't want to see anybody displaced. So the easiest way to get a tenant to leave, rather than kicking them out, is to find them somewhere else to live, right? And then, of course, without being discriminatory, you've got to be very careful. And maybe background check, if it's your own home and your family lives there, you really need to be careful who you rent out to. Which, why I don't like Airbnb's, okay? Well, that's another topic for another day. Thank you very much, Eli, on you said? No, I, yeah, thanks.
And you're very patient.
I'm very patient.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Arisha Morris, single mother of three. My question is about waiting lists for housing. How long do you have to wait? And why do you have to wait so long?
Fifty years.
That's ridiculous.
I still haven't got mine. My waitlist is fourteen years, and I gave up. That being said, now I kind of wish that I knew where I was in that list, but I'm probably gonna be moving out of province before my affordable unit ever comes around.
The reason, the reason people are waiting is that because the previous governments, liberals and conservatives have not wanted building affordable housing. And this is the reason that there is no stop for affordable housing. People who are living in those conditions are needing actually larger units, because their family has increased, and they are waiting too. So it's a real crisis, what we need is to build more housing, so that we move the waiting list quicker and faster. so that we move the waiting list quicker and faster. That would require a different kind of government, not for conservative government, which is don't want to invest in affordable housing. And that's why we need an individual government to live with that.
And basically, you're not going to get a unit until somebody dies?
If that...
That's right, their family member can take it over. Like, yeah, you'd be waiting for a long time until we make laws. I'm so sorry.
Yes, sir. The waiting, everyone, we're ahead, but you let everyone ahead.
Oh, what a gentleman!
Thank you.
Sugar is hard to...
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick, and I, a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Hassan, for having me this meeting. I just want to say that I live a condominium. And what I have to do because of the housing situation, I have to be helping family members and friends stay at my place, which felt that very convenient. Saying that, Mr. Hassan, I want to ask you a specific question. Do you have access to developers and builders prior to them building a building? Do you have that access? Can you get access, like, your offices or the telephone or media offices, et cetera, et cetera? Can you access that as an MP?
I mean, right now, I cannot think of many, but I don't exactly which developers you're talking about, but I think...
Okay, I'll give you an example. I live on Market Market, in the way, the condominium there. And there's a building beside me that has been pulled for a high-rise. And I'm not sure if it's rental or condominium, I think it's rental. So I believe that, the reason why I ask you that question, I think that we can argue among ourselves, because I think sometimes the mistake that we make, we're preaching to ourselves as opposed to preaching to the people that we need help from or can help us or are discriminating against us. So the reason why I ask this question, if we can build partnership with some of these builders and landlords and, you know, new developments that are going, I think we would probably have a success. The way I, so I want to ask you, what do you mean with...
Avenue.
Avenue, and also...
Avenue.
I think if you can develop partnership with these builders and these developers and try to offer them some incentive and some, some kind of a, whatever, to help, to help you, help us, not you help us in our quest, because I think that's probably another way of approaching it. So, I don't know, I think about that.
If I understand clearly what you're saying, like, these developers are coming to our community, if they're building a park, if they're creating units for a building, if those rents are affordable, those kinds of partnerships. Something you're talking about?
Yeah, well, yeah, well, for example, if, like, instead of lobbying the government and instead of fighting with, men like, would never see Doug Ford at a meeting like this. Sorry, it's not going to happen. Neither we've got a secretary, thank God you're here. But if we can develop, go straight to the core, the core, and meet with these developers and just sit down in their offices and say, "Well, proposal for you, what can you say? What kind of a, what can we provide? Like, what can we give back to you for you to kind of accommodate people that cannot afford market rental?"
The answer to that is density. But they basically just don't care. We were talking with Sean at the Housing at City Hall about this discussion about these 11 sites that we're in front of appropriate. And I said, "Can we not do the same thing? Like, we want 50%." They said 30. I said, "Can we maybe make it 40% affordable if we give them like a bigger tax break?" And the question there is, whose balls in the court? We need it more than they do. If I said, "Oh, this is just what the cost of doing business in Toronto is. Look how much money you guys are making off us. It's time for you to give something back." They like laugh in our faces. The, what they want are more condos. So the only way that we are going to get more rental units is to allow them to build more condos, which means breaking the zoning bylaws, allowing them to build more floors per condo, allowing them to build more condos further and further away from the downtown board. And in that, we hope to possibly get back a few more developments that are affordable. It is, it's a horrible trap. I mean, until people stop showing interest in condominiums, they're going to keep throwing them up.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's not any other questions, I guess concluding remains.
Yeah, well, housing is a human right. And I think we need to make sure that's ensuring in Canada. I think that we need, we desperately need affordable housing, and we need more purpose-built rental housing being built as soon as possible in this city, because people are suffering because of this. People are dying on the streets.
So, hold on, we just finished a question.
No, I've got a question, just one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. And thank you for inviting us to speak. Yeah, I think the main point is, yeah, that we do have a housing crisis, but I think all of us coming together, you know, there's a lot of power in people coming together. And I think that, at the end of the day, like, that's going to be our hope, and that's going to be our driving force. And I just hope that, you know, this is sort of just the start of a conversation, but, you know, that there's just power in numbers, and I hope that we can come together on this.
Well, I mean, yeah, I really appreciate everybody who came out here tonight, everybody who got off work a little bit early, everyone who knows that they're going to come a little bit late or, you know, haven't had dinner yet. I really appreciate the sacrifice. Because yes, this is an issue larger than even just our personal problems. Everybody is upset by this, and everybody's affected differently. And there are people that are currently homeless. And I'll say that most people I have talked to that are living on the street currently have horribly sad but preventable stories about how they ended up homeless. And I'd say about two-thirds of low-to-moderate-income people who don't have that kind of money in the bank. What my rent is, $1,400? What do you have in the bank? I don't have next month's rent in the bank right now. You lose your job, you're making one or two paychecks away from being homeless. And it can happen to anybody. You could have a slip and fall, you could have an accident, you have a family member fall ill. You could, unfortunately, didn't remember 650 Parliament, and they had that large fire? 1,500 people displaced like that. And a lot of them still haven't gotten a new home. Some of them are still in the hotels. And so we can't be laze about it. It can't be one of those things that, "Oh, it happened to everybody else, and I said nothing until they came for me and there was nobody left to speak up." Sign of the Bible, set back, some flag. But it did, that was about to not to germinate, June. But we need to stand up and say something while it's happening to everyone else around us, because it will come for us. Eventually, it'll just be condos, and there'll be nobody else left. And if you can't afford to live here in Toronto, well, then suck for you. I know so many people who work here and can't afford to live here. And so long as Toronto wants its economy to stay balanced, I mean, what happens if we all just say we can't work here? We can't afford to live here, we can't afford to work here, does the economy just grind to a halt? So before it comes to that, we need to stand up and speak out. And it all starts like this. One voice might get lost in the wind, but when we're loud enough, we get heard. So thank you for coming out. I'd like to see some of you maybe become Acorn members. I'd like to see more of these spaces at City Hall when you're invited to talent halls, when you're invited to discussion panels. Your opinion does matter, okay? Everybody's opinion matters. And if we all speak together as one voice, we will get this done. For our children in the future.
Hi, I just wanted to keep this brief. And I don't want to trespass on the time, and I hope that what I say is valid and considered. And you see, the thing is, when it comes to like independent housing and citizen, like independent citizen housing, like food and nutritional amenities, luxuries,